开新的一個環節了
欢迎到新的會議我們歡迎管理人員裁判院的理事長裁審院的監控長主席官的首席執行官主席官的首席秘書長主席官的首席秘書長以及他們的團隊每個小時包括問題和答案我會讀出成員的名字侯丹朝女士曹莉亞莫女士蔡小茂先生蔡瑞臣先生蔡迪徐先生蔡林祥先生醫生陳忠泰醫生 醫生K黑國醫生 蔡美蔻天醫生醫生艾倫王醫生蔡瑞匡先生 以及蔡托尼·查 先生侯丹朝女士4分鐘 謝謝時間確實非常有限而很多成員沒有機會發表所以我會非常快速我覺得有很多緊急這應該盡快完成問題是關於民族 minority 的 steering committee 和相關的工作安排在關於 EM 的工作方面 steering committee 列載在 анекс中 他們如何加強支持 EM 但是顯然他們拒絕了一些特定的領域有很多說明但根據現在的結果但一旦疫情平息政府能否幫助活動由 EM 组成例如供 EM 活動當疫情結束組織秩序恢復我認為我們應該滿足他們長期需求而 CSO的辦公室也在參與 騎行委員會的工作显然這不是在 анекс中提到的 所以我想知道有沒有計劃管理人員陳詩朗女士我會邀請 金麗娜·匡女士 人資源規劃和 poverty coordination單位的主席 答應這個問題謝謝你的問題對民族 minority 的問題請講話你聽見我嗎
是的它是由首席秘書長領導的 CSO已與數目 EM 身體有關在活動場地方面我們聽到很多意見在這個方面在家庭事務部門有一些民族 minority 中心和活動可以在那裡舉行最多的這些場地針對 EM 但對政府場地在 general 在請求中我們會參考相關請求到適當部門當疫情結束我們興奮地協議這些請求与相關部門在協調方面 是的，這可以做到 下一位曹莉亞莫女士蔡林祥有聲音我們接觸但目前 如Facebook或者Instagram 但她知道如何使用Twitter嗎 Donald Trump和Barth Johnson有Twitter帳號 所以在這個方面如何讓蔡林祥接觸所以你有沒有問題聘任這個職位有消息說蔡林祥在北京報告說警備疫情或條件以及與支持建立者而且令人驚訝的是但蔡林祥說她不會在任何密信或通信與北京所以從我的理解如果你不否認它那就意味著它是真的所以如何 如何CSO的辦公室 誤解事實 你花了超過1000萬 製作一部視頻
蔡林祥首席秘書長主席官首先 為什麼我們沒有Twitter帳號 為了與眾人之間的通訊工具 我們有Facebook和Instagram帳號 在 recent outbreak 和各種社交事件的背景下我們介紹了 Facebook上的detainer talk平台 或針對特定的誠實以希望填滿空缺你將開設開放招募嗎如果我們看到那麼其他問題呢就像我們說的作為正常做法我們不會回復或評論任何與中央政府關係的密信最後問題就像我們說的我們把很多注意力放在主席執行官和 public之間的溝通上 在與 public 交流這是為什麼我們會製作短視頻以傳播政府信息在更輕鬆的方式製作這些視頻在 video production 下沒有分別分類我們肯定會謹慎我認為在 CEO 為工作是非常艱辛的工作蔡小茂先生主席官我想提一下 CEO 語言0號012 對於這個帖子是負責管理社交媒體平台的 CEO Facebook和Instagram 至今為2月2日 這一年的帖子數都被 約300帖子在每個平台上 當年1.42億美元 或2,066美元 per post 這是費用我認為這會是最好的 paid 記者或社交媒體記者在香港曹莉亞莫問關於 KPIs 但你沒有提及這個問題你可以輸表社會 popularity 的評價在這些帖子發行之前和之後你可以看到結果你可以看到工作就 meaningless 因為他或她想要銷售的產品并不是非常吸引人所以是否有 KPI 或價值資金的評估對於對談辦公室還有還有主任對談辦公室實際上在做什麼首先問題蔡林祥女士請謝謝這工作非常重要 因為通過Facebook和Instagram CEO 可以與 public 交流這是為什麼我們需要這個帖子就像我們在回覆中提到的而很多人會看到最新的更新 CEO 通過Facebook和Instagram帳號 而 CEO 也會分享她在不同問題上的看法 我認為2,000美元 per post 是值得的让人们釋放怒火那麼對談辦公室呢會在不久後到期沒有工作所以蔡瑞臣先生和責任團隊 在26月27日 有個對談會由 CEO 組成遮蔽了 closed doors 就像我們說的 有超過30個 以及有Facebook Live會議 除了首席執行官三個秘書長 搬辦了Facebook Live會議 2月2日 我們計劃了許多深度對談 以及在Facebook上 live會議 但由於 outbreak 你會否拒絕對談辦公室如果沒有對談仍然可能下一位蔡瑞臣先生
蔡瑞臣先生好的我們剛剛有夢想如果有用的話應該繼續不是因為勒克羅 funding 規章如果我記得好我想問其他部門如何錢被誤會欲求 public 要考慮 CSO01 在這方面我曾經問幸好我們有金融協會我們可以充分利用這些時間我想知道是否還有其他機會來將這件 PICO 任務而且自進入 expedition 動門的中旬什麼時候做了 PICO 我看到 Betty Fang 她可能很強大但我並不是確定她在職位上做了什麼好的 在11月1日 普民政策研究基金有這個特別的輪迴 花了27億美元 我們想研究最近的社會壓力你是否釋放了所有研究資金如果是的但拒絕了討論提供的主題他的回答是你說特別的輪迴的評估是否根據解決方案所以在完成這個研究之後你真的可以解決任何問題如果你想照顧問題導向他們的需求幫立起 COI 所以這些才是真正的解決方案而不是研究問題然後說解決方向我們的研究涉及暴力以及是否有政府在進入 expedition 路線時的錯誤決定所以香港政府可以改善嗎 Betty Fang 主席官如果支持勒克羅 panel 想邀請 PICO 去調查在這裏工作我們當然歡迎來到為政府內部研究團隊我們的任務是支持首席執行官和政策部門對於研究他們委託給我們我們從來沒有停止和協調政策建議也是我們的工作在這個年頭我們有推出特別的輪迴在政策研究基金很好的反應 過去100個提案 在接受和釋放資金之後我們會在這個月對於那些選擇的研討例如研究的名稱和主題和釋放金額會在 press release 和網站上顯示在這些研究完成之後譇告也會也被發布所以請不要擔心譇告不會公開現在我們 知道了76個成功的申請人 和獨立評估 panel 以及它的關聯性在投資基金的專項中 我們提出了12個主題 但其中一個回覆 CSO023 我們列出了安吉斯 據據210個申請人 他們真的涵盖了12個主題 我們列出了更流行的主題是最近的社會事件下一位蔡迪徐 2個問題 LC032 在製造口罩的過程 2020年1月 有15,000個 CSI口罩製造 另一方面政府的 logistics 部門也製造任何 non CSI口罩 由 GLD 補充或是因為你沒有提出請求或我們沒有得到分配第二個問題 CSO04 在政府記錄記錄政府提供了一些數據以及丢失 confidential files 2015年 警察丢失了14個 confidential files 2016年 警察部失去兩個 2017年 ICAC 失去一個文件 2018年 警察部失去一個文件 2019年 沒有我想知道誰可以回答這個問題由 claiming confidential 普民不會知道或是或甚至涉嫌非法活動以及丢失这些 confidential files 的後續工作和發生的狀況和有多少人被處罰有兩個問題首先首席秘書長蔡林祥先生
在成員問題的回覆中在疫情期間如必要我們會從 GLD 補充對於 GLD 補充的口罩我們沒有直接參與或具體意見 好的，首席秘書長 主席官或無許可的摧殘我們在回覆中我只是想問我們的處理方式是會要求部門記錄管理人員詍究確認現狀尽量儘可能恢復文件以及採取緩衝措施防止回復對於每一個研究報告主席官 GRS 會跟蹤考慮這個情況顯示部門不熟悉記錄管理的標準 从2015到2018 所以我們在談談18個 confidential files 丢失所以你的後續和是否有 suspected criminal offense 在過去五年警察丟失文件我是在說丟失 confidential files 我不是在說許可而對於丢失文件會進行調查在一些案例中有人還與專業或或行政程序有關我沒有 further information 我可以補充之後的會議好的陳詩朗女士你補充之後的會議你有資料在手嗎下一位蔡林祥先生我有問題給 ICAC 17號 對於 ICAC 說明一個特別的調查團隊在處理警察猜測警察縱容或無恥行為當中而 ICAC 為了應付是的在進入 expedition 動門的 civil servants 被懷疑誤會 ICAC 打理了20個 suspected corruption 相關於 civil some civil service 向提出的 expedition 条件對於委員長這些 civil servants 是警察員嗎 Simon Page 在問或 Mr Ken Ho 主席調查員我根據得到的信息 2月20日 我們處理了28個 包含了對立我可以說警察員警察員和其他 civil servants 都有關你可以補充之後的會議嗎是的對於 suspected corruption 那是包括漫遊在公共職位根據規定我不是在討論特定的案件我問 除這28個 suspected corruption 那是包括私交在公共職位據據調查權誰同意 好的，Mr Ho 我只有40分鐘 我知道你的權限你想回答還是拒絕回答簡單我們開始調查我們會繼續調查這就包括 MIPO 委員長而且暴露腐敗行為而且要改訂任何程序會導致腐敗 12 C 也提到委員長視得我們需要報告給首席執行官 Mr Ho 在 expedition 路線或穿操作指示牌那會不會落入腐敗習慣好的好的 Gregory Hall 這個腐敗案例褐敗並不是只涉及盜竊如果這個特定的警察你會調查如何這樣規定的警察據據 ICAC 要12 C 12 A 委員長的職責會需要調查報告中確認的腐敗行為如果可以調查如何而且腐敗防止盜竊或他們在盜竊和提供盜竊在調查中如果發現其他犯罪我們也會調查他們而在結論的時候我們會諮詢證據充足如果我們不偵查我們必須報告 ICAT We must uh also report to the uh I C A T in independent review committee before closing the file.
Thanks, Mr. Chang Chong Tai. I'd like to ask about um C S O zero, zero one, oh, zero one four and zero one six. Um, this is about the contents of the. Strategic Public Policy Research Funding Scheme under P I C O. And this would, there would be vetting with regards to the funding scheme. For the um for former scheme, um there is not much on it, but for the research funding scheme. When we look at the funding allocation for the last four years. It was very obvious that for projects related to the Bay Area, they would almost always be better. And in twenty seventeen, there was yet to be the concept of the Bay Area, but from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty. Um, two thirds of the projects involved Bay Area, twenty seventeen to eighteen, um there were two related projects amounting to three or five million. Twenty eighteen to nineteen, all the projects were about the Bay Area, twenty nineteen to twenty, two of the three projects were related to the Greater Bay Area. Even though um P I C O indicated that they would set a strategic theme every year. But for the um substantial allocations, um does it mean that um projects related to the Bay Area would um almost always be granted? We did not see any other. Projects, um we only saw the um approved projects. So uh it gave a very poor um im- impression. And that is um all the projects related to the Greater Bay Area would be approved. Mrs. Feng. For if anyone is familiar with our public um research funding schemes, they were not approved by P I C O, but instead by an independent vetting committee. For the twelve stra- strategic themes, we propose some. The Greater Bay Area is only one of them. The rest include um transitional housing, population aging, youth and child development, et cetera. Independent reviewers would conduct a peer review under the committee. And um on average, three projects would be approved every year, um a number were related to the Greater Bay Area. But when we look at the details, um very often. They had to do with um. Green topics or other topics. But a number of local research institutes would like to secure two to five years of funding to um look at. Why the topics related to the Bay Area and um more resources are needed in this regard. For the projects, um can we have a list of um? Projects who have large applications every year. I do not quite trust the vetting committee. Can we? See a list of applications instead of only the um successful projects? We are happy to provide that list. This year, um with the um epidemic and changes in the international political scenes. Should we not limit the theme to um regional topics, for example, the U S Hong Kong Policy Acts? Uh medical innovation, I find these important and they are more relevant to the Hong Kong society. Would these be considered in future themes? For the twelve strategic themes in twenty nineteen to twenty, um medical development and innovation are among the themes. We are now um mapping out the strategic themes for twenty twenty to twenty one. We will consult the relevant policy bureaus and um. Healthcare innovation will continue to be one of the themes, I believe. Doctor K Quo, C E O, reply number zero zero six. In mid February, the C E's office submitted. An epidemic control report. The report um cited the current difficulties. Um including the difficulties faced by government in the um anti extradition law bill movement. And um some people, some government officials were blamed for not supporting the chief executive. So what was the amounts of um public funds involved? Was it an exercise to um support the? Election campaign for the pro establishment campaign or um did the report seek to tell of certain parties? Like we said. Our normal practice is to not comment on any correspondence and communication with the central government. So in other words, you do not even know uh what the purpose of that report was, how. Um what was the cost of compiling this report? I have nothing to add. I. Only asked about the um cost for compiling the report, how many man hours were spent or? Was it solely compiled by Carrie Lam without any help from other staff? Like I said, um we, I have nothing to add because we would not comment on any correspondence or communication with the central people's government. What is the reason? It involves lots of public funds. This is taxpayers' money, while the C E's office um compiles a report that seeks to tell of certain parties. All the taxpayers um contribute to the public money. So how could you not? Explain the situation? I have nothing to add. So um was the report by Apple Daily substantiated? I have nothing to add, Chairman. I'd like to ask about reply serial number one. The salary of Carrie Lam has increased to five point two one million dollar for twenty twenty to twenty one or an extra ten thousand dollar per month. Many people expect her to step down and um her population popularity rating has plunged to single digits. So what are the standards in um adjusting her salary if she has done such a poor job? What are the grounds for her pay rise? Thank you very much. The emoluments and annual adjustments of the um chief executive and her accountability officials are based on a longstanding mechanism. Adjustments would be based on the composite price index. And independent committee would make recommendations and it would be approved by the fi- finance committee of Leshco. The entire Hong Kong um public are disappointed with C E and the senior officials. Um her population popularity rating is minus seventy or something along those lines. We cannot fire the chief executive. So can we um slash her pay or impose other punishments? Currently, like I said, um. There is a longstanding mechanism, so this mechanism should be reviewed. Um, you are wasting more than five million dollars of public money. For L C reply number zero zero one. And um a lot of Leshco practice have been politically motivated at the last House Committee. Meeting, um the presiding um chairman was criticized for expelling members. When has some Leshco become a tool for political um prosecution? Are you siding with the government to create um embarrassment or unjust treatment on the elected lawmakers? Secretary General Chairman, in discharging our duties. We have remained politically neutral. So why um did the electrical staff refuse to um follow the instruction of the. Uh of Mr. Dennis Quoc, but for uh lawmakers like Eddie Chu. They were often surrounded. We off- we offered a written reply to members. Our main consideration at that time. Was to was out of safety consideration. The meeting was coming to an end at that time. Time is up. Secretary General, do you have anything to add? Yes, I will be very quick. We believe that a verbal warning was most appropriate at that time.
Mark Tian. Well, so that Hong Kong is uh affected by the epidemic with uncertain economic outlook. And a lot of the management in the companies had already taken pay cut. And yet the C E's pay got increased instead. In twenty twenty to twenty one, the estimate expenditure is five point two one million. Uh a hundred twenty thousand pay rise from last year. In such times. How could? Any top leader in any company have the thick skin to give themselves a pay rise? Even though the in February, the C E had made a donation to community chest of one month pay and yet the epidemic. Would not only affect the workers who paying extraordinary amount of money to pay masks. And however, there will be a massive layoffs and company closures on the horizon. The society would looking to C E's to take a pay cut and to uh write out some together. In her response, the C E claims that if condition worsens, she will respond in due course. Well, I don't see things going up anytime soon. I see is that this year. Is not a year for C E to get a pay rise. Not only that. And for now, and until the all the border control points have been reopened. As in having abolished the fourteen day mandatory quarantine, just the same as before. The police, the C E should take a pay cut of thirty percent to tie. Uh as well uh tighten the belt together. And Miss Shirley Lam, can you pass on this pro establishment member? Suggestion. I got quite a bit of time. I'm not going to use it up. Ms. Lam. Do you see what I propose at a point? You, there's no way to dodge this question. Uh thank you, Mr. Tian. Like I said, the C E and the political officials pay a review and a mechanism. And last Jul- first of July, as per this mechanism and also. Having adjusted slightly outward as per this C P I. And. Like Michael Tian said, due to this epidemic situation and to uh fight the virus together. The C and her political team had donated one month's salary to community chess, hoping to helping those in need. The C had mentioned herself that if things continue to deteriorate, the political team will respond accordingly. You failed to answer my question, a very simple one. Do you see what I said at a point? Anything to add? I have nothing to add. Nothing to add at all. Okay, I'm not going to put you on the spot because I ponder wish I should ask that question as well. I got a bit of time left. I wanted to tell all those here watching now. I don't know there's any. Uh company head or C E O would actually consider giving themselves a pay rise. Regardless of what happened last year. Whether they're getting a bonus and all that, because this is a message you're sending. Well, you can always make it up next year. From now until the uh lockdown be removed, a lot would naturally lead her response, something a picket of two months or three months. It would look better her if she failed to adopt this. Next, Dr. Helen Wong, two questions. C S O O three seven and C S O three O three eight. One is about a P I C O and another on dialogue office and on the dialogue office. So we have organized a thirty seven dialogue sessions. Of the thirty seven dialogue sessions, so what have you learned? And what have been agreed and adopted by the government and what haven't been uh taken on board? And would you actually issue a report on the outcome of the dialogues for the public and the members' reference? First question, Shirley Lam. I'm sorry, uh Peter Chan. Deputy Director of Dialogue Office. On the work of dialogue office. I had already set out earlier of the thirty seven. Dialogue sessions. One of them is a community dialogue that was broadcast live on television. And of four others. Uh uh done through Facebook Live. That is was completely open. To the public and a lot of these sessions. Were conducted in depth and behind closed doors. In order to allowing the participants. To exchange more candidly, we have promised them that. We will not. Disclose the relevant discussion. I'm asking, what kind of lessons have you learned? Well, what had the government taken on board and what would the government do? I'm not asking to disclose the names of those who attended. Uh thank President. Like I said. As we're not uh allowed to discuss the contents of the discussion, whatever advice. Or views we have listened to is very difficult to. Uh say it out here. So it's difficult to conduct a valid for money edit if you fail to reproduce even the report.
We do not know whether you are going to follow up on um what you heard. So what is the point of these dialogue sessions? Like I said, um due to the epidemic. Many Facebook Live chats and. Dialogue sessions had to be postponed. And I'd like to add that in November last year. In light of the social incidents. The functions of the dialogue office were expanded. We provided secretariat services. For a an interdepartmental working group chaired by the Chief Secretary. And they would um coordinate the actions or follow up required by different bureaus and departments in light of the social incidents. I think he's taking around it in circles. He did not answer the question. I'd like to ask about C S O zero three eight. And um under the Public Policy Research Funding Scheme or P P R F S. There would be um eighteen um studies. One includes among the topics, the views of the public or attitude to violence or mutual destruction. Would this include um exploring um the view that um Carrie Lam is the um creator of the mutual destruction? She refused to um wear mask. So would your study include this? Thank you very much. The special round of the scheme is open for applications. We have received um two hundred and ten applications. From think tanks and tertiary institutions. And item number two, the public's attitude to violence or mutual destruction, we have received dozens of applications. Uh we are yet to. Announce the um contents by the end of April. We would disclose the topics and relevant um. Funds of the applications. When would um the results be announced? According to P I C O policy. Um all the contents of the um research programs would be announced. We would give them six months, so they should be completed by October. Mr. Roy Kong. Carrie Lam has a nickname. Um she only, her popularity rating has dropped to nine points. Even her deep blue supporters um do not support her. Ninety percent of people do not support her. Um and yet she has enjoyed a pay rise during this very difficult time. And um she enjoyed a pay rise of one hundred and twenty thousand dollar to five point two one million dollars. She is better paid than uh Xi Jinping and Barack Obama. She is better paid than uh Xi Jinping and Barack Obama. Um she is the second most well-paid leader in the world. So um we can see that she has very thick skin. Well, she can um uh. Reject the pay rise or at least address the situation. And she said um there could be um. She she might have a response when the situation of Hong Kong gets worse. So is the situation now not bad enough? Would um Hong Kong have to plunge even deeper for Carrie Lam to slash her salary? Thank you very much. In February, the C and her accountability team. Offered to donate one month's of salary. In the future, um when time is appropriate, the accountability team um would respond as appropriate. Miss Shirley Lam. You said action would be taken when appropriate. Um there is now prohibition against um gatherings and a lot of bars and restaurants are suffering. Um we are seeing a domino's effect um on our economy. And now someone called Carrie Lam is saying that um she would enjoy a pay rise to five point two one million dollars. So of course, the public would be unhappy. I would not ask for your personal opinion. But if you say that um actions would be taken when the situation turns worse. So are you saying that this is not the worst time for Hong Kong yet? I have nothing to add, Chairman. Chairman. Well, I think the um. The real answer is that she had nothing to say. If this is a question answer session for the Chief Executive, of course, we would be very aggressive. Even Carrie Lam's close allies feel dismayed. But um this is a special finance committee meeting. Many world leaders. Um have stepped up, but um now the Hong Kong um public um thinks that this is money going down the drains on Carrie Lam. Public servants should be serving Hong Kong and at this very difficult time for Hong Kong. Um their bosses have enjoyed a pay rise and nothing has been said. If the situation worsens and action would be taken, um when would that happen? Would it take place um during the epidemic or after the epidemic is over? Can you promise to do something um before the epidemic is over? Would Carrie Lam lower her excessive salary? Chairman. It's not that the C and her accountability team did not um respond at all. In February, they donated one month's salary to the community chess. As for what happens down the road, I believe that the C and her accountability team would um take action as appropriate. Mister Tony Che, I'd like to follow up on reply serial number C S O zero two nine. A question by doctor by Miss Elizabeth Quod. Last year, Pico received um. Ten F ten requests for the provision of first stop and one-stop project consultation and coordination services. And these involve a lot of idle government land and buildings. As far as I know, um there are a number of idle sites, for example, um near Shing Wong Temple. It was left um idle for almost twenty years. And. I believe Pico is handling at least ten requests at the moment, but it involves different departments. Um some departments um like to occupy sites for no reason. And valuable resources have been wasted. Has Pico analyzed these cases? And I'm aware that the office only has four staff members. But they would have to um liaise with many different departments. So is the manpower provision adequate? The most senior member of the office is a um senior urban planner. So would that be adequate? I'd like to thank Mister Chair for supporting our one-stop services in the past year. For um projects two and three, we can see that um there are vacant stalls. If um these sites could be utilized, the public would benefit. We would work with N G Os. And they would um help identify sites as well as N G Os who are interested in using these sites. Through interdevelopmental coordination, we are able to um come up with solutions. For some of the cases, we have been following up with relevant departments. Some of them said they needed to retain the sites to prepare for certain works, but we would not give up easily. So for sites yet to be utilized, can they be uh vacated for at least one or two years? The manpower under the project coordination team is four. But apart from the four offices, we have other support staff as well. What about the um bargaining power of the um leader of the team? Um if our colleagues run into any problems, um the request could be elevated and I can. Um liaise with the relevant heads of departments. C S O zero one two. At the C E's office um in the anti extradition law bill. Um movement and the anti epidemic work, um their performance in new media has been poor. Uh since July twenty seventeen, three hundred eighty-two Facebook posts were published. Or one post every three days on average. This is inadequate. And that is why um very often uh correct messages were overwhelmed by fake news. So if when the officer goes on leave, um who will take up the work? Miss Shirley Lam, thank you. Apart from the C E's Facebook and Instagram pages. We set up a new Facebook page called Tamer Talk. Whenever we encounter fake news, rumors, or untrue reports. We would use the Tamer Talk platform to address different issues. Mister Chair, uh when was the Tamer Talk page created? It was set up already. When was it set up? Uh I believe it was December last year. Mister Ma Feng Quo, thank you. I'd like to follow up on one of the question I asked C S O zero two four. About the government record service. The um estimate for twenty twenty to twenty-one has increased by twenty-one point seven percent, which is substantial. While the manpower increase was um twelve offices. In the last two years, it was one hundred thirty and about one hundred twenty. So the uh manpower reinforcement is less than ten percent. And we did not see a substantial increase or enhancement services. And um services are now provided on some Saturday mornings and um there are no substantial expenditure. For the other increase in expenditure. Um they could be offset by the a a reduction in um certain equipments and services. For the um cost of um procuring um records. And about two point four million dollars were earmarked last year. So um. What contributed to the twenty-two percent of increase in expenditure? Mister Lam.
Thank you, Mister Ma's question. The government record service in the expenditure estimates have increased by nineteen point nine million. Was mainly uh due to increase in uh long permanent and short-term posts. There's a few key work areas that need to be expanded. First, we need to. Uh help the government departments before twenty twenty-five to implement the electronic. Uh document management service. We need a dedicated talent in helping the I T B to take forward the project. And in twenty nineteen policy address. On the, we will boost the training on uh archival management. And for all, we need to provide basic training for new recruits. And we'll also provide on the service training with especially different departments. Thus, uh the number of training quotas will increase from four thousand to ten thousand. And also that additional power can also strengthen the work of our public record. Uh archives and how to utilize uh digitization for better preservation of our records. So these will uh increase our expenditure for the coming year. As from Mister Ma's concern. That whether on the procurement of other record collections, well, each year will set aside a budget for that. If we see there's a need to uh enrich our holdings, we will uh deploy resources for that. I also uh asked the questions, well, you have additional manpower is less about ten percent and probably not a senior positions. So the impact on the expenditure not about ten percent. So for the uh extra um at the ten percent, does it have to do with the training that led to such a major jump? Uh my supporters support thing the work on uh records management. I believe that's important in the long term. I just want to ascertain where the additional money will be spent on. The government response only gave part of the answer. However, the answer didn't really justify to twenty-two percent increase in expenditure. Besides the payroll. Would have other uh staff that are not really civil servants. For example, on the uh maintenance uh contracts. Or the uh post-retirement contract scheme staff will recruit for short-term positions. For example, on the uh record keeping system initiation, so. Uh and so that we have set aside more money for employment contracts. Next, Mister Yuen is young. They follow up on uh C E O oh one four. On the issue of uh C E taking a pay cut. And a lot of members have asked before me, and well, they will, the C will get a pay right this year um instead of a pay freeze or pay cut. And as you claim that um at the end of February, in order to uh weather tight times of the public, the C and her political team. Have donated one month's salary for the uh community chess helping to those in need. So the call for a pay cut or a pay donation not only help those in need. It's just is to uh identify with the public and what are the tough times together, show the Hong Kong people that they care about their hardship. And for each family member. Or all S M Es and also the service industries, restaurants, everyone is doing tough. And Chen Cheng Ying will probably most understand that. A lot of people were quite deeply in debt. Because we want to ride out this turbulent time together and survive it. We don't really care about the one or two million. The amount of donation is nowhere enough to help the whole Hong Kong economy. We want the government and the C E to feel the public's pain. That's why I'm asking government good team for a pay cut. A lot of members before me have cited a lot of, for examples, the head of state helps a pay cut. Pay freeze or even waiving their pay. And the Malaysian Prime Minister and the cabinet have a uh pay cut two months and the Korean. The cabinet members and the prime minister will have a thirty percent pay cut in four months and Turkey president have donated seven months of their salary. That's what we call. And uh the um showing the public that he has. You are reading to ride on the storm together. This is what the government will want to see. Hope the government can show some sincerity. And you claim that uh the situation situation continue worsen. I think that we couldn't get any worse and all the shops were closed. As there hardly any people day or night. So so how could we save our economy? If not the government willing to uh support it, things would worse. However, we don't want to see things get any worse. So you claim that should this uh situation continue to worsen, the political team will make channel responses, quote unquote. Do you think that the worst is yet to come? So when will the moment come? Are you expecting deaths? Or you got more cases confirmed? So what do you mean by that situation continue to worsen? Mister Shirley Lam. Back in the February. Because the C E and her political team. Uh hope to show the solidarity with the public and fight the virus together. And decided to donate one month's pay to the community chess. So that was end of February. Back then, the C E mentioned that it shall closely monitor the Hong Kong's situation and how the epidemic progresses. If things continue, they will make channel response. I believe that the political team. At this time, the whole political team are working around the clock to fight the virus. And also closely monitor the Hong Kong economy and where necessary, they will make this channel responses. Hong Kong now have nearly nine hundred confirmed cases. I think things are continuing to get worse. I hope the government shows sincerity and make commitment and challenge the Hong Kong people. The C E is willing to weather it tough with the public. Last question, Mister Dennis Quoc. I believe that on the issue, why C E is still getting a pay raise? I have nothing more to ask. Because Shirley Lam's response. Uh rather pale in comparison and unconvincing to the public. I believe this quite clear. I don't need you to reiterate that you have taken one month's pay cut and will make time response. The whole world is shocked at why a chief executive could still get a pay rise. You call it. Writing it out with the public and respond to the prevailing circumstances. So I have a question for I C A C. Uh former Chief Justice Andrew Lee in his report have have proposed thirty five recommendations and respond. One recommendation was that to uh modify the amend the I C A C ordinance so that it is independent of the chief executive. And also in the able to investigate uh misconduct and corruption of the C E. And also on the acceptance of interest by C E, that's a proposal, the I C A C ordinance. To be amended. That I've been following for seven to eight years, since the report released in twenty twelve and eight years on. Then and what's the result of your study and what have you come up with? Sam Pei, I C A C Commissioner. On the I C A C ordinance, the I C A C Law Enforcement Agency. And so whether it's the I C ordinance should be amended and how should amend it, that's the work of the Hong Kong government. We're not in a position to comment. That means you're totally unaware. Where that this uh recommendations for their report. Have implemented on the progress, you have no participation, nothing to add. So you're not, you're not part of this. And Chairman, uh necessary, uh the government consult the I C A C. And chairman, if necessary, uh the government consult the I C A C will give our opinion, so what's the progress? Eight years on for the release report, are you to carry on the recommendations or you're not able to do anything? On this question, I'm not in position to answer because it's the government, that means you have no part of this. Uh so you're not able to answer or any other reason? When the government need to consult, that we will provide. Our, it says, we are rather reactive, have they consult you on the report recommendation, yes. So at which stage on the end and how do you respond, are you advising to go ahead or continue to study this uh recommendations? On the contents of the of our advice, we're not in a position to divulge, so is it ongoing? Um I think you're checking for the progress or you're aware of the progress, if you're not aware of the progress, you can just say. Well, we are the body being consulted, we have no grasp of the progress. So a question for the C E's office. On the Angela's twenty-eight twelve uh report by Angela to reform the I C A C, so what's the progress? So Commissioner Pei here not no idea what's going on. I'll pass over to direct administration. And as per Mister Quoc's question, we're involved in the provisional bribery ordinance, a section three and eight is applicable to the C E. Since all the involved uh the uh basic law on the establishment of the government and also involving the constitutional role of the C E. And we claim a complication, we need to listen to the holistic constitutional and the legal impact, we need more time to study this recommendation. At this stage, we haven't caught any uh concrete date on how do we uh on handling this uh issue. The last question by Mister Attitude is second round, three minutes. C E O uh O O six. From what I found out from Mr. Sherry Lam had responded. That for um any correspondence between the S L government and the central government would not be commented on. A follow-up here, in your response that is in line with established practice, quote unquote. For the government refusal to respond to any communication with the central authorities, which article in Basic Law or which uh law? Uh is uh led to this established practice, second question. And the C O uh C E submission to the State Council in twenty nineteen, and you claim that. Is the. It's a between the government and the central authorities, does that mean that the State Council and the F M O C R C? And also also include any uh municipal government, provincial government, can you give a definition of the central authorities? Two questions here, Mister Shirley Lam. These quote-unquote established practice. Well, generally, that's our general practice, that we will not disclose, I'm asking you to read out the dictionary, I know what is established practice mean. I I'm asking which uh law, that rather basic law or Hong Kong legislation or even mainland law, so what's the legal basis of not disclosing? That's our established practice. She didn't take my question, can you give a positive answer, okay, you claim there's no legal basis, that is still an answer, however, you can't just be parroting my words. There's no provision in the basic law, so that is the general practice with between the government and the central authorities. President, I don't get what he said. For the basic law, there's no. Uh such provision, thus this established practice. Is the established practice between the Hong Kong government and the central authorities? Well, there's no logic in that, they just claim that that what we do, you need to follow the rules, we need to uh. Abide by the authority conferred to you, but now you have no legal basis to claim that you can evade logical questions. Uh on the uh communications between the government and the central authorities, that means you have no legal basis to do so. Anything to read, Miss Lam, I have nothing to read in particular. And for, I can um take another question, what do you mean by central authorities?
Any correspondence or communication with the Central People's Government, um we would not um. Comments on them. So what does the Central People's Government encompass, does it include all um? Pro- provinces and cities, I think there is a difference, we are referring to our. Correspondence with the Central People's Government or central authorities, this is the end of the session, we would resume in the afternoon, thank you.